Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the Jackson Public School Board Meeting, October 3rd. I welcome the staff, our new student representatives, our community, and our listening audience of Jackson, Mississippi. My name is Camille Stut Sims and I'm acting in the role of President, voted Vice President. And I would like to say, I'm actually pretty proud of Jackson Public Schools and what our faculty and staff have been doing over the last few weeks. We've been under pressure and we have been under the eye of the public. And I would say overall, our attitudes have been good and we're pressing forward to be a best school district possible. So I just want to say that upfront, we are working hard to improve every day our posture in the state of Mississippi. So with that, we will move on to now our pledge of allegiance. Dr. Otha Belcher, would you bring forth our student, please?
Good evening. Mickey Michaela Williams is a 5th grade scholar who attends Bates Elementary. She loves reading, playing the piano, and practicing gymnastics with her little sister. She is very outgoing, loving, and caring. She loves helping people, especially her teachers and with her peers. Mickey Michaela is an honor roll student at Bates. She is an active member of the National Beta Club, the National Junior Society, the Precious Pearls, the Bates Choir, the Girl Scouts, and the GMS, which stands for Girls Excelling in Mississippi Schools. So without further ado, Ms. Mickey Michaela Williams.
Would you please stand, great afternoon. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Pledge, salute. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. If you'd hold on one moment, we have a person that would like to give you some tokens of our appreciation. Ms. Johnson? Thank you. Do we have any parents or anyone from Bates Elementary? If you do, please stand. All right. She came with a fan club. Thank you so much. We appreciate you. All right, we'll move on now. We have a quorum. I'm sorry. Moment of inspiration. Moment of inspiration.
So Pastor Donald Boyd is bringing our moment of inspiration. For the past seven years, Dr. Donald Boyd has served as pastor of New Freedom Tabernacle of Praise Church in Meridian. He enjoys this time, he enjoys this time as it gives him an opportunity to share his faith and assist others in developing a relationship with the Lord. Pastor Boyd is a graduate of the University of Mississippi, which with an emphasis in biological science and a minor in Russian. He received his master's degree in biological science as well as a specialist degree in education leadership from Mississippi College. To date, he is working towards completing his doctorate in education leadership from Mississippi College. The 2017-2018 school year marks his 13th year as an educator and will be his first year as principal of Sawell Middle School Leadership Academy. Pastor Boyd is honored, humbled, and excited to serve as principal of Sawell Middle School and to work with other, with such dedicated staff, outstanding learners, supportive parents, and a caring community. This school year, he looks forward to focusing on scholar academic success, effective principal leadership, effective teaching, parent community engagement, and scholar adult recognition.
Good evening. To the board, Dr. Murray. Picture it, 300 men, in debt, in distress, and discontent, in a cave called Adulum, which is from the Greek word "dalla," which means "to dangle." Right now, Jackson Public Schools is in this place right now, a place that we're unsure, a place of uncertainty, but we know who's in control. But I do like the response of David, a couple of chapters over, when he asked, "Shall I pursue after this truth?" And the answer was, "Pursue, and without fail, you shall recover all." I don't know about you, but I'm in the season of recovery, and I believe that Jackson Public School is in the right place at the right time to recover everything that has been lost in this hour and in this season. On last week, I had an experience like never before. I was sitting at a conference in a different place, and I had my name badge here, and it said Jackson Public Schools. And as I was there and as I was sitting, I began to hear comments all around about Jackson Public Schools. And I heard comments such as, someone used the acronym JPS, which stands for Just Playing School. But I come to serve them notice that we're no longer just playing school. We're here to educate our children and to push them to where they need to be. But I like the response from David when he says that you have to encourage yourself. Every single day when I wake up, and I'm glad, Dr. Murray, to be a part of this journey with you, because every day we get up and we face what the media is saying about us and we face what's happening in the community. But I don't know about you, I'm excited about the position that we're in now, because it gives us an opportunity to go forward and to go ahead in what we are doing. Many times, there are people on the outside who will say that we cannot do it, but I'm of the persuasion tonight that we can do whatever we want to do. And I believe that we can do all things through he who strengthens us. And I want to encourage you on tonight, that in this place that we're in, you will be discouraged sometimes. You will be in discontent sometimes, but you have to learn that greater is he that is in you than he that is in the world, and that the latter shall be greater than the former house. And it doesn't matter what we look like now, but it will matter what we look like in the end. So I come to serve you notice tonight, to be inspired tonight, to have passion and to have commitment about what you do, because I'm excited about this journey in JPS. I don't know about you, but every day I put my clothes on, it's about serving children. It's about serving the community and about giving, giving back to those who are less fortunate. And I come to tell you tonight that we're with you, Dr. Murray. We don't know what the future holds, but we're behind you all the way. School board, be encouraged. Teachers, be encouraged. Principals, be encouraged, because it doesn't look well right now. But greater is the end of a thing than the beginning of a thing. And as we say at Sawell Middle School every single day, make it a great day or not, the choice is yours. And remember, if nobody else loves you, I do. We do. Great day. Woo-hoo!
Give him something. Go give Mr. President that quick. Pastor Boyd. We appreciate those words of encouragement, and I can just imagine what the children of Sawell Middle School get on a daily basis. We're fortunate to have you. We got Mr. Jones to give you a token of appreciation. Now, did you bring anybody with you, Pastor Boyd, from Sawell?
Yes, I will. My assistant principal, Miss Beasley.
Oh, Miss Beasley.
She's with us.
All right, thank you. And parents. And parents.
Pastor Boyd, thank you for such inspirational reaffirmation of what our journey is about and the lesson that we have gained. On behalf of the school board, on behalf of the members of the community, President Murray, faculty and staff, students, and we're going to say, "Cheers with you," a certificate of appreciation, and thank you for being a part of our team and we look forward to seeing you in everything that's going on in Sawell.
I want to go over to Sawell at least, just be around. Now we have establishment of a quorum, and everybody's here. We appreciate our colleagues in being present. Now we move for adoption of agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Oppenheim, seconded by Mr. Jones. Any questions? Can we get a vote by raising your hand? Ms. Johnson? All eyes are unanimous. Reading and approval of minutes from September 19th. Can we get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Johnson, seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor, please raise your hands. Unanimous vote, thank you. All right, now we move to public participation, general comment, and our proposed policy issues.
Board members, you have several persons who have signed up to address you this evening and as part of public participation. I have had some conversations. One of them is Mr. Bobby Brown, the head of our curriculum department, along with some other employees in his department. What they want to address you has to do with an item that is on the personnel agenda. And so, because they want to address you respectively about how that item on the personnel agenda is going to affect and deal with them individually, I have asked Ms. Sims and am asking the board if you would be agreeable to hearing them in executive session, but pulling that one item on the personnel agenda for action until after you've heard from them, because if you voted on it as part of the consent agenda, then it would kind of moot your point of hearing them in executive session later on. So, Dr. Murray may know exactly which item it is, but I believe all three of the persons who have signed up to address you are persons that want to address you in executive session in connection with an item you'll be voting on later in open session.
Okay, we'll try to find exactly what the item and section is in. So we'll move forward. Are there any other public comments?
Let me just confirm. We have, is it Sharon Turner? I just want to confirm that Ms. Turner is also part of the folks in the curriculum department that want to address the board. Okay. Yes. That's everyone.
Okay, thank you.
But I believe you may get several others. It's more than three persons, from what I understand.
All right. Okay, thank you. Now we're down to review of discipline cases. Dr. Knox or Dr. Murray?
No discipline cases.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Question?
Okay.
Is this for whom?
Well, I guess it'd be Dr. Knox.
Dr. Knox? Is he available? Dr. Knox, we have a question, please. Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Dr. Murray and Ms. Sims. The question I have is, I noticed, you know, as we're reviewing the referrals for disciplinary and so on, how has the review assessment of last year PBIS process impacted the current referrals? And where are we in terms of last year to this point, in terms of referrals, as we use this PBIS process?
Madam President, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Jones, get your mic.
Thank you.
The only information I can give you at this time is that for September of 2017, the number of cases that we received in our office was less than half the number received of September 2016.
Okay. Okay, so the process at this point is working better based on trends that you've seen from last year to this year, there was some implementation. I guess I'm trying to get a clear understanding of where we are in these cases.
For whatever reason, the number was less than half.
Okay.
And that's, I can just give you the numbers, Mr. Jones.
Okay, all right. Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
But I think we can infer that that's, the answer is yes.
Okay.
We can infer from the code, again, that half of what we had last year, we're making progress.
Okay.
That's the inference that we make from that data. But also, I'd just like to go a step further. Dr. Knox and I met this morning. We're going to be working very strategically to roll out a philosophy of discipline on how we deal with students, not just to look at the code and do PBIS, but what do we as adults think about the discipline in the district? So we've worked on that, and we'll be rolling that out as a comprehensive approach to deal with discipline. But to answer your question, the data says that yes, that the systems that we have in place, PBIS, Tools for Life, Restorative Justice, are yielding positive effects.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could just say, kind of to the point of bringing up the moratorium on suspensions for K through 3rd graders, you know, during our last board meeting, that that's an adult issue and not a child issue when we're suspending kids at such a young age. So I hope that by doing the PBIS work, doing the Tools for Life, and all of these other, hopefully more than just initiatives, that we're able to get to that point. So I appreciate your work on that.
Okay. As we look at this piece, Dr. Murray, how are we, how does that team or that advisory or that philosophy group look? What do you anticipate to make of it? How do those initiatives be?
Well, actually, it'll involve all of our staff. It'll start, of course, with, we'll have some conversation this Friday with our leadership team, and then we'll start having that conversation with our staff. But again, it's just a way of thinking about discipline. You know, you, many times we make decisions based on what we did for the next child, but you really have to, if you're going to be fair about it, you have to look at every student individually and do what's best for the children. Now, sometimes, you know, that may not be the approach, because we're following the code. But again, we as adults have to know what we think about discipline and how we feel like we should address the needs of our students in order to move us forward.
Sure.
So we want to be on the same page and have a district-wide philosophy on how we deal with discipline.
Okay. Will this enable a space for parents to be engaged in this conversation?
Oh, definitely. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Okay, I guess if we could get a date on it, just to kind of see how this has been going.
Yes, sir. We'll keep you abreast of that.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Dr. Knox.
Thank you, Dr. Knox. Thank you, Dr. Murray. With that said, we're going to move on to the superintendent's report and announcements.
Okay. Good afternoon, board president, members of the board, community. Each year, organizations nationwide designate the month of October as a time to recognize contributions of elementary, middle, and high school principals. I would like to acknowledge all principals at this time. If you are a principal and you're in the audience, please stand. Thank you all. You may be seated. I have experienced firsthand how principals are more than just caretakers of the school. Principals are expected to be educational leaders, disciplinarians, community builders, spokesmen, budget analysts, and guardians of policy mandates and initiatives. Principals set the academic tone for their schools and work collaboratively with teachers to set performance objectives and maintain high curriculum standards. Along with the board of trustees, I encourage all students, parents, and employees to acknowledge the important role that principals play in ensuring that every child has access to high quality education. Let's give our principals, all of our principals, those that are here and those that are not, a round of applause. Thank you. Student Board of Trustees. In May, the JPS School Board adopted a policy that allows students to serve as representatives to the board. Each high school has a student representative. Each board member will serve as a mentor to the student representatives in their ward. The eligibility requirements for student representatives include the following. Each student must be chosen by a student body during a government, during a student government election for a one-year term. He or she must be entering their junior or senior year. The scholar must exhibit characteristics of good citizenship, and the student must maintain a 95% attendance rate and a GPA of at least 2.5. The student representative from each school will serve as an advisor to the board. They will also provide a communication link with the student body. Through their participation, student representatives will receive practical experience in government operations. I would like to recognize the JPS student representatives for the 2017-18 school year. At this time, I would like for all of our student representatives to stand, so we can see you, okay? Give them a round of applause. I would like for each representative to come forward individually to introduce yourself one at a time. State your name, the school that you attend, and your plans for career in college. Okay, once you come forward, go back and be seated. Once everyone has completed their presentation, then we'll have a picture, okay? We'll start with, we know where he's from.
Callaway. Seaway.
Yeah, Facebook. Come on, Facebook.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Donce Moore, senior at Callaway High School. Ensuing my departure from Callaway, I plan on attending Morehouse in Atlanta particularly, or Clark Atlanta University, where I will study philosophy abroad and probably have a minor in either public speaking or music.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jonathan Jasper. I go to Forest Hill High School. And when I graduate, I plan on moving to Los Angeles, California, and go to a school called AMDA, and it stands for American Musical Dramatic Academy, and study in acting, singing, and television production. Thank you.
My name is Jessica Leggett. I'm a senior at The Jim Hill High School. I plan on, after graduating from Jim Hill High School, I plan on attending either Jackson State University or Mississippi State University, where I plan to major in biomedical engineering or biology pre-med. Then afterwards, I plan to attend Baylor University to get my master's in prosthetics or orthotics.
Hello, I'm from Lanier High School. My name is Blair. I plan on being a physical therapy therapist, and I'm going to Tugalu College. I'm going to get my bachelor's degree. Then I'm going to a DTP program to be physical therapist.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Okay. My name is Amaya Jones, and I'm a senior at The Mara High School. And I plan on going to school in San Francisco for forensic science.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Yessen McDuffie. I'm here representing Provine High School. After I graduate, I plan on majoring in nursing, either at USM or Mississippi State. And afterwards, I will slowly move myself up to be a plastic surgeon.
My name is Shamaya Thompson. I'm a junior at Wingfield High School. When I graduate from Wingfield High School, I plan on going to Southern University in Baton Rouge, Louisiana, to study law.
Let's give our student reps another round of applause. Did we want to make any comments before?
Yes.
Before we take a vote?
Yeah, if I might. Thank you, Dr. Murray, and thank you, principals and area superintendents who pushed this forward, and thank you, students, for stepping up into this. It's been a long process to get to this point, and your work is going to be vital, right? So we know that there's a lot of issues going on. We know that the state and the district are trying to figure some things out right now, to put it mildly. But your voice is vital to all of this right now, as you represent not only your school peers, but your wards too, in your voice, not only to us as a school board, but potentially to the state, to the city, to anybody else who's going to have a say in our, in our future here in Jackson. So stay active and engaged, and I'm sure after this meeting, we'll make sure to follow up, to kind of do more of the nuts and bolts kind of training work that needs to go into, so that you're not just coming here and sitting, but that you're actively involved, not only with us, but with the whole school district. So, thank you so much. I'm excited. I hope you all are excited. It's a lot of work, so.
I'd like to say I'm also delighted, such a broad and illustrious way of student talent. I'm just marveled at the aspirations, but we look forward to working with you as you're here as seniors and juniors to really represent us at a critical juncture. And as the principal of Sawell said, we're in that critical time, but we need your voice, not just to be whispered, but throughout the district, throughout your community, because we together are going to build the JPS family bigger and better, and we're going to be active doing the bright thing at the right time. So we applaud all you all stepping into service for the community as well as your school. So with that said, we're going to take some pictures. So, with that said, we're going to take some pictures.
At this time, we're going to have a briefing from Bailey. Bailey's been working with us with the corrective action plan, with the results, the findings from the audit, so they'll come forward and provide a briefing for you at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Murray and Board. I'm not real sure how to go about this after that, right? Students, inspiration, and a stuffy old consultant. But just a quick briefing and let you know what kind of work has been going on with the corrective action plan. As you know, the Board contracted with the Bailey Education Group to support the work with the corrective action plan. We are currently under sort of phase two of that work. It's a 30-day contract that ends November the 30th. I will tell you that everything that's happened in the last month or so has been very interesting, but the people in your leadership team, your district leadership team, continue to grind away at this corrective action plan. Ms. Ann Moore is here with me, and we both bear witness to that. When I say weekly meetings go on, I'm telling you, they go on weekly and sometimes two or three times a week. I know that because we're called into them by phone or in person. And so, the work is continuing. I want to commend the people that have been doing that, because that starts from the classroom to the principal, to the district-level team, the superintendent. That's us all the way up. There's a lot of hard work that has to be done, and it is being done. Let me reassure you of that. Just a couple things that are continuing to be done, and maybe an example of one, the district has updated policies, developed procedures, and provided training for staff to address the areas of noncompliance. We have heard that several times throughout the last month or so. I know we heard it with the commission, and the district also reported it with the state Board. But it is happening, and it's very important that that happens. And sometimes, you can't put your hands on that right away. Let me give you a great example. Standard 20, which we consider maybe one of the most important standards there is, is the instructional standard. The district has put policies in place and revamped procedures so that what happens in the classroom essentially is what standard 20 is all about. What happens in the classroom is real rigorous day-to-day instruction. Now, is that happening overnight? Is that changing overnight? No, and it's not happening fast enough for anybody, any of you, any of us. It's not happening quick enough for anybody, but it is a process that we go through. And in order to say you're 100% compliant with standard 20, it takes a lot of things. You could walk through a building, go in classes, and get one simple gauge of whether things are going well or whether they're not, and that's connected to standard 20. You can look at policies and procedures and say you may or may not be in compliance with standard 20. The district has moved aggressively in both of those areas. You can look at benchmark assessment data throughout the school year and see the growth or not growth of proficiency numbers in math and ELA and science. And then, the ultimate goal is at the end of the school year, when the state test is given, that data comes out and you say, okay, well, maybe we're doing better with standard 20, and we think we are. So, you can't right away say you're 100% compliant with standard 20 because it's such a long process. Standard 20 is not the only standard that applies to. It is a long process, and this district is moving forward in every single standard. They have been addressed, every standard has been addressed, and things are moving forward with each standard. And that's important for everybody to know, the work is continuing. The district has provided training on specific accreditation standards. Building principals have been trained on accreditation standards. School-level compliance teams have been established to monitor that. We go back and say, one of the, you know, we say procedures and policies that have been put in place or have been revamped, the policy IDB that we brag on all the time, you guys brag on all the time, and you should, that Ms. Moore and I have not seen in a district before. It's the accountability policy. And even that one is connected with standard 20 because it's making sure people are doing what it is that they're supposed to do from the classroom all the way through the district. And so, it's a big, big step in the right direction, and that, at the end of the day, you have to hold, whether it's this organization or any organization, or any company or any business, whatever it is, you got to hold people accountable for what they're doing, and that's a big, big part of this. That's another process that we will go through in seeing if we're, if the district is compliant with each standard. You have to day in and day out stay compliant and be accountable to someone, and that's one of the reasons that's really, really important. The district, as you know, completed an extensive enrollment and residency verification process for all students, which was not an easy task. It didn't go perfectly, but nothing ever does. And so, you keep churning away at it, and you just keep working on it. And then, there are things that you can put your hands on very quickly that you can see done. Buses, the purchase of the buses and the bus routes is one thing. Security at the middle schools and high schools has been improved. I think we may have heard that in some of the data, in this discipline data. I'd love to see that discipline data, by the way. But those are things that you can put your hands on very quickly and say that they have been done. There are just a lot of things that you can't put your hands on right now to say it's 100% compliant, but the work is churning away in order to become compliant. And so, that's why we're really, really encouraged. I will say, and I think Ms. Moore would echo this, she's seen a lot more corrective action plans than I have. I saw a few while I was at the department. She was just there a lot longer than I was. But both of us will say that the movement in this corrective action plan is better, as good or better than any corrective action plan that we've seen. And there are sometimes districts get bogged down in the work, and they, you know, they get tired, and they keep chasing things and chasing things and chasing things. I want to tell you that your leadership team is behind them with a fire, saying, you got to keep moving. You got to keep moving. And so, it's a big, big deal. We're there to sort of validate that what's going on, the policies, procedures, and the practices and things like that, are what it's going to take to become 100% compliant. And just another reminder that when you say 100% compliant, that means one standard is you're 100% compliant in that standard. So, if you're one student off, or one policy off, or one area off, then you're not going to be 100% compliant. You may be 85 or 90% compliant, but you won't be 100% compliant. Our goal, and the district's goal, I know, is to become 100% compliant in every single one of those standards. And Ms. Moore and I are kind of here to validate and to reassure you that that work is continuing, and we're proud to be a part of it.
Thank you. Board members, I think we have some questions. I have a question because in the conversation with the commission and the State Board of Education, I just want to go to this. Well, maybe I'll wait until after my colleagues have asked questions. So, go ahead, Ricky, Mr. Jones.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for what you do, what you're doing, and as well as doing, will do for our district. I have a question in reference to that standard 2.1, which involves the Board. Where are we in terms of rectifying, getting all of that piece of business put to bed?
Council may want to update you a little bit more in-depth, and I know they're working on revamping policies and procedures and things like that. You guys want to provide any detail about where the district is on that?
We can. Mr. Jones, you have in your board material some of the policies that are under the consent agenda for approval tonight that were identified in the audit that we discussed at the last board meeting. The leadership, the administration are constantly making sure that all the policies are correct and the procedures are correct. So, some of those specific policies that were identified, if you may recall, was the promotion and retention policy, and that's policy JBJ, I believe. And that policy, the Board approved it with revisions at the August 8th meeting scheduled for the July meeting. And of course, the audit pointed out that there was some inconsistencies in that particular policy, and that's because when we merged the policy to include the Literacy Promotion Act that the governor approved, we still had some old language about social promotion that was carried over. So, what we did was revise that and delete that language, so you now have approval, the language that is consistent. And the other thing that I believe the audit pointed out was that there's still a need to go over all the publications in the district, and we're working on that, trying to get a list of all the publications in the district, because we have a large number of publications. So, that's just a brief outline of the work. I believe the grading policy is also on the agenda for approval. And some of the policies, I just want to point out, some of the policies that MDE said that we didn't have or that had not been updated, we actually had just an, I don't think it was malicious at all, but just an oversight. For example, the fixed assets management policy, which is DOA, I think the audit said we hadn't amended it since 1993. That was incorrect. We had actually amended it in that cycle of policies. I think the latest date was December of 2016, and so, we pointed that out in our response. And additionally, I believe the audit said that we did not have the policy sale of computers to students. We did have that policy. And again, you know, may have just been an oversight in looking at our policies on the web. But that's a brief synopsis of the work.
Great. And that also addresses the, as the Board, in terms of our policies, are we, where are we, or is that part of that, that whole bag?
I believe, Mr. Jones, you're, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I believe the actual standards, the actual specific standard that addresses the Board policies are standard 1, 1.1 and 1.2, I believe. And those policies are, those are kind of the ones that I'm talking about, but also the policies that the audit pointed out, a kind of weave throughout the audit dispersed among different standards and just not confined to that particular standard. And of course, 2.1 just deals with furnishing information period and making sure everything is accurate and correct.
Okay. So, we are?
We believe that we are compliant. We think that there might be, you know, always it might be something else that we have missed, but we're looking at it every day, and we believe that we're complying and working toward compliance.
All right, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Just a follow-up on that and then a question for Bailey. So, does that mean, from our understanding, we could now call MDE and say, come review this? We think we're in compliance, since I think that was a point of contention during the hearing, that there was confusion about when we could do that?
I'm not sure that we are ready to call MDE just yet, because we have to get the policies up on the web that are scheduled for approval tonight.
Thank you. And then, my question about the Bailey work, have we shifted either any of the way we've worked or any of the things that we're working on since the September hearing?
Shifted in the sense of momentum, maybe, but again, we contend, and the district contends, that the process that they had built, even before Bailey arrived, before we got here, that was the process that you needed. Now, there were some, you know, the accountability policy was a big part of that, because you hold people's feet to the fire while you're going through that. We have obviously identified things that may have been brought to our attention and the district's attention during the commission meeting, during the board meeting, but there wasn't a whole lot of surprises in any of that. So, we just continue to work in trying to get those that we agree are noncompliant to compliance.
And then, do we have a list or some kind of document that shows where, again, how far we've come and where we think that we are compliant? Is that something that's available to us?
Well, we have, we're actually working on a document now that provides some dates, again, but we're guarded in saying, you know, MDE determines whether we're compliant or not. It's our belief that, again, we put, we've put processes and actions, procedures in place to address all of the standards. And so, there are timelines that are outlined in the current audit, and we will, we're poised to meet all of those timelines that are there. We've met the ones up to this point, and we are poised to do that for every standard.
But we're still updating that document that had like the red, the yellow, the green thing to show about what percentage we think that we are at in terms of?
Well, yes. That document was for, was primarily for the legislative limited audit. And so, as we, you know, complete those items district-wide and for the standards that were not listed there, we are updating that document.
Dr. Murray, I appreciate you jogging my memory, and the deadlines are a key thing that I did not bring up. That has been a focus since the hearings, because there are deadlines that were impending, yeah, very quickly, that, you know, the district is working on very fervently to meet those deadlines to make sure that that's, you know, it's not something that we, you know, we have a responsibility there, so we'll meet the deadlines.
Okay. I've got a question. I guess my question is, since you all have been in other districts that have had to do a legislative audit and limited audit, of the districts that have actually had a takeover that you worked in, how many of those have you been involved with?
Three. I've been, I've directly been involved with three.
Okay. And I know it's been said that, you know, there's been lack of urgency, lack of, we've just not been paying attention to the standards and compliance with it. What would you, your assessment be in comparative to our fervor and our willingness to be compliant? How would you gauge out us from the rest of them, perhaps?
Of course, Ms. Moore's had a few more than I have.
Well, Ms. Moore's welcome to come to the podium.
But I think I said something about this earlier. I think she and I agree on this. This is not moving fast enough for anyone, right? So, I want to make sure everybody understands that. And when we say we've addressed 100% of the standards, we've addressed them. They're not compliant, but we've addressed, the district has addressed and moving forward. I have not seen that type of movement in any other district as aggressive as this district is moving.
Thank you. And when you say address, kind of give me what that definition means when you say address.
I'll give you, I'll go back to standard 20. The district is currently reaching out to external providers to provide teacher and leadership support in the classrooms and in the buildings in this district to make sure that standard 20 is in compliance. From a math standpoint, ELA, whether it's teaching coaching or leadership coaching, both of them, that's just an example of looking at standard 20 and saying, our classroom instruction is not rigorous enough, we're not doing a real good job there, they cited us on it, so we're going to make sure we do something. That's just one response to one standard. Address means we see if there's a deficiency, and we agree that there's a deficiency, the district does, and we've put some kind of policy or procedure in place so that we can now be compliant at some point. Just because you put the policy and the procedure in place is, I mean, is compliant. The work comes behind that.
Yes, yes, yes. And I think we all recognize, even as a Board, that the procedure has to be put in position, and you work toward the procedure in carrying out the end result. And education is not done in one blink. It's a process, and, you know, we're tested at the end of a grading period and so forth. So, I appreciate your work and Ms. Moore's work, what we've done. We've been working real hard, and I know I hear all the time from the staff and the superintendent, we're really making strides in the right direction, I believe.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have a question. You talked about policies, procedures, and growth, and then you talked about one student off is not 100% compliance. Can you sort of give me an example of that?
Say that one more time, the last part.
One student off is not 100% compliance. So, is that one student not growing, is?
That could be part of standard 20. One student not showing growth, and if you don't have procedures and policies in place that would spur that growth, like support, teacher support or leadership support, anything that would touch that standard. Standard 20 is, it was a good one to use as an example, but also, it's so expansive, it touches everything. But there could be policies that you have in place that sometimes... But there could be policies that you have in place that sometimes reversely affect students and adversely affect students. But you got to figure out what those are and move them. Or you figure out what kind of support you need in that school so that that student can show growth.
So you don't really know if your policies and procedures are working until you have that growth?
Till you see some outcomes. A lot of times, that's the case.
Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Thank you so much. Since this week is nine weeks test or last week, we're in that space of nine weeks test, how will that information be able to shore up where we are as a matrix or measure for standard 20? What type of pre-planning has gone into, in short scene, where we need to shore up those areas? As you mentioned, you said there may be, or perhaps there may be some areas in there that cannot be touched until we get data. So how will we use that?
Well, I think we can touch them. I think we can put things in place. Dr. Mary, Dr. Murray might want to speak to the instructional management system. I know they revamped and revised the instructional management system, which you should see in benchmark data.
Okay.
And sometimes, you got to wrap all that in the fact that you still have classrooms with non-certified teachers in them. So that's always an issue, is have to work towards. But, you know, it takes, in my mind, and I think in your mind, at the end of the day, data is data, right? And the data show, with the data showing, so if you've got a lot of procedures in place and policies in place that support standard 20, you should be able to see it in the data. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. And lastly, just a bit of information. We've been in conversation with the Council of Great City Schools, which, of course, you all know, we are a partner with the Council of Great City Schools. And they will be coming in to perform an academic review over the next few weeks to help us, to help guide our instructional programs. And they do this all across the country at no cost. Of course, you know, we'll be providing support for, you know, travel and meals and things like that, but for the service, there is no charge. This has proven very beneficial for urban districts across the country. And they are in lockstep with us. We've been talking with them over the last couple of weeks. So we look forward to that and we just want to inform you all of that, of that partnership.
How long is that process going to take?
Dr. Mary, if you could speak to that.
Dr. Murray and Board of Trustees, that process can take three to five days in order to complete an academic review. What they do, to give you a little insight, is that they come in and they look at the instructional programming and hence it being called an academic review. They will visit with leadership, they will visit with teachers and administrators, and really come up with an analysis of how to move the district forward. There are a number of districts that they have worked with. And once they have provided the review and adjustments have been made, districts have trended in a very positive direction and been able to sustain their success. So it is a three. The first, it's a couple of visits. One, they come and do the review, talk, gather data, both qualitative and quantitative data. Then they come back, share some recommendations, and do another assessment in that process.
All right. Mr. Jones and then Mr. Alvinheim.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that we have made this step toward this level of assessment. One of the things, Ms. Turner, that I would like for the board to ensure that whenever those reports are made, that we have access to them. So we can be all in the same space as board members when they provide that feedback. Because I know that's critical for us to see and ensure that we all look at the same piece of information. And thank you so much for being, taking this initiative on and being definitely poised for receiving this level of assistance and everything. Thank you so much.
Mr. Alvinheim?
Thank you. And this is probably just intuitive, but part of filling them in before they come is about what we've just passed with the instructional management plan and all the work being done around the audit so that they're in line with understanding that piece before they come in and do the review.
Oh, yeah. They're very familiar with what's happening.
Right. But in the actual practice of what they'll be reviewing so that we don't get diverted because they're saying, well, I mean, it could be fodder when they come in and they say, well, you know, that doesn't work. And we're like, well, you know, the state says that's what we need to be doing. That's a whole nother story. But just want to make sure that it's aligned with what we need to be doing too, because I think this is a great opportunity.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
That is superintendent's report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Murray. Great information here. Okay. Now we're going to move on to information items. Mrs. Shepherd, do you want to speak to the school community relations?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Sims, Dr. Murray, other members of the board. You have as part of your cap, the review of the case section of the policies, or most of the case section of the policies. A few will come at the next board meeting. And as Ms. Sims said, the case section of the policies are geared toward school community relations and having an open relationship with the community and the public. And so all the policies are designed to that end. For instance, you have policy KBA, which says the public has a right to access the board minutes and other information that is not exempted by the open records request. The public or the media, KBBA speaks to the media, access to campus. We ask that the media goes through the superintendent or his designee to achieve that. KGA is actually the use of school facilities for emergency use rather than, I think it was labeled in the materials, the plan, use of the playground site. But that's corrected. And that policy just simply provides that sometimes, like in the case of a natural disaster, someone may have to use the campus facilities. And we did that with Hurricane Katrina. And of course, if there's any damage, then they have to pay for it. The public can also, they play on school sites or use the school sites after hours. There's a process for that through the facilities department. Sports coverage, news releases, we try to make sure that our news releases go to all of the media outlets and we don't give exclusives. Your policy prohibits that. And of course, the policy that is particular and special to the board is policy KC, and that is the school community, board community relations. And of course, the board wants an open dialogue and relationship with the community that you all serve. The other policy, and I'm just highlighting a few of them. The other policy is KJ, visitors to schools. You will remember that we revised that back in March. So those are policies just for review. There are no changes recommended to these policies. It's just a part of the cap where we do a monthly review of all your policies. And you're almost through with that review cycle. The next level of policies is section L, and that'll come back to you at the October 17th meeting, I believe.
Okay. So Attorney Shepherd, this is information only, so there's no vote on this.
No vote.
Are there any questions or any comments that we have on any of these policies that are out for review? Mr. Alvinheim?
Yeah, thank you. And it's not really a question, but just kind of a sentiment for, especially for our audience and anybody who's paying attention, you know, online or wherever, that because we bring these up for review and we don't necessarily discuss them or vote on them, doesn't mean that you can't push us to bring these up for further discussion, amendments, changes, et cetera, et cetera. And so, you know, especially looking at this section K, school community relations, right? I think it's really important that we're raising issues like we have been recently to get policies reviewed and whatnot. And so this is an opportunity. So just because it's an information item only, item only, doesn't mean that as the community goes, we wouldn't bring these back up for further, deeper discussion and all that, the process with public comment, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Now we're going to move on to information action items. Mrs. Miller, if you would come forth, and she's already here.
Thank you, Ms. Sims, Dr. Murray, members of the board. I present to you item A, approval of payments to teachers from the school recognition program. And just a little bit of background about this program. During the legislative session, the legislature introduced a $20.3 million of funds that were allocated to schools and to individual teachers that had shown growth from their 2014 test scores to 2015, 16 test scores. And so there was a module and there was a rubric for every school to show eligibility. So for example, schools that were rated an A, those licensed employees were eligible for $100 per student, per ADA award. So there were different levels of movement and different schools and different instruction, different levels of reward for these teachers. So I'm very pleased to announce that JPS has 16 schools that are recognized in this program for the 2014-15 change to 2015-16. And they are actually distributing to licensed employees at their schools $458,712 among their licensed employees. So the process was that every school had to develop a teacher group, not led by the principal, not led by any administrator, but the teachers came up and each school had a different amount based on their changes in their test scores. And they determined how they wanted those funds distributed. Some schools, teacher groups determined that they would split it all between all teachers. Some schools did a variation of that. And again, our schools, we have 16 that are splitting $458,712. And this board item, the teachers will be paid, or the licensed staff that will be paid that are eligible and that are included, will be paid in a one-time payment at November 30. So this will be a good Christmas present for many of them. And so we are presenting this payment to these teachers for your approval.
Thank you very much. This is an awesome thing to get almost a half a million dollars here to our teachers. Any comments from any of my colleagues?
Yes, have a question.
Mr. Jones? Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, please.
Is this the first year for this program?
This is the first year.
Oh, yes. In terms of this number of dollars, okay, what are plans for, because you mentioned on ADA, how would this going forward impact our process of ensuring we have the number of head, you know, head counts and spaces? This directly impacts, you know, this award for these teachers or for additional teachers that may be coming up next year or whatever.
Well, I think, probably, Mr. Jones, the most influence, the thing that will influence this will actually be the movement in the test scores. It's based on the number of students in ADA, but the money comes basically because of the movement. So if you move from an F to a B, you get a greater amount of money per student. But of course, having students in school every single solitary day is going to help. Because again, teachers get, like, the A schools got $100 per ADA.
Right.
So again, it's the ADA and also the change and the movement and the improvement in academics that the students show is what will be important.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I guess we can talk more about this when we get to the budget area. Thank you.
Okay. This is a great deal. Go ahead, Mr. Alvinheim.
Thanks, Ms. Miller. And thanks for responding that this is coming from state dollars and not from our budget as it is. I think that's really important for us to know. And so this is a great achievement for these teachers. Some of us fought this law because this is essentially a merit pay bill that is not based on any kind of best practices for getting educators to really do great things, you know, across the board. And it becomes kind of competitive. But I'm glad to see this. It is ironic that the state's willing to give us money for this, but, you know, not some of the other underfunding issues. But thank you for bringing this in front of us.
Yes, sir.
All right. Do we need to vote on this in any measure?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Sommum, second.
All right. All in favor? Can I see your hand? Unanimous.
Thank you.
All right. Now we're going to move on to consent agenda items. Finance, Ms. Miller, you're still at the podium.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you again. Board members, I present to you consent agenda items. Finance, A, approval of accounts payable and activity funds for September 9th through September 22nd. Item B, approval to declare the lease agreement in default between JPS and Mid-South Tire and Truck Service, Inc. C, the request to ratify the 16th section rental adjustment between the Board of Trustees of Jackson Public School District and Carol's Nursery. D, approval of various donations. And E, approval of various budgets for '17, '18. If I may, go ahead and read the donations.
Yes.
To partners in education, pencils, pens, notebook, notebooks and erasers valued at $30 from Sandy McCall of Jackson, dry erase boards, classroom rugs, pencil sharpeners, books, notebooks and other supplies for the pie store valued at $30,000 from, and I'm going to butcher this, RIC, Rec Foundation, care of Ms. Pauline Rogers of Jackson, and from Ms. Monica Wilson, miscellaneous supplies for $1,100 to also to partners in ed. To Chastain Middle School, from Stephanie Crawford of Richland, from her EEF card, Adele Inspire, Inspire, Inspiren, that's wrong, desktop 3,000 series valued at $299. Also from a teacher at Span Elementary, an HP printer valued at $60. And from Ms. Bernadette Robinson, a trombone valued at $800 to People's Middle School.
Thank you so much. Thanks for the huge donations to, we appreciate it in making our school work better. All right? Thank you. Can I get a motion on the floor for all of the items A through E?
Sommum.
Second.
I have one question.
You have a question, Mr. Jones?
I do. Okay. On the 16th section piece?
Yes, sir.
How, when would it be possible for our representative that's, you know, handling advisement, you know, regarding our 16th section, be able to come and give a presentation to us to kind of let us know where we are and what's, kind of what we're doing?
At your wheel, we have a 16th section land manager who actually just handles the leases, but I'm actually your representative when it comes to that.
Okay, okay. Well, first to give an update on that, if that would be a good deal, because I know with anticipated changes going forward in terms of income, because this is going to take a hit on that default, of course.
It is. But I, one thing that I do know in the experience with this lessee in particular, this is not the first time this has happened. And so they typically have trouble paying at this time of the year. That's why we give them a little bit more time. But they typically come back because, again, this is a big operation. And so this action, if the board has approved it tonight, will virtually then have to, they will have to shut down operations and move. But we have to do it because he has had ample time, in our opinion, to pay this. So I don't think that it may be the end. But again, we aggressively are moving to make sure that we get, I mean, lessees into our properties, especially in that South Jackson corridor. We are losing a number of lessees as their leases expire to the nature, really basically to the nature of the area. But we are working with the city and making sure, especially like around the Lynch Creek area, that they help us with supporting that, supporting that area. There's some erosion problems there, but the city's been very, very responsive on helping us there so we can keep those tenants there. But we are, I feel like this one will come back. But of course, we have to follow the policies and the procedures of the Secretary of State's office. So if this lease default is declared and you all approve it, they will be required to pay all lease, all lease amounts that are up through the end of their lease, plus the legal fees, and also move their property.
Okay, great. And for me, with the owners of that, they do have a large operation. But it would be great, I feel, that we could get a lease representative or a person handling those to come and give us a, an updating overview of what's anticipated, particularly as we're entering into this new space. Like I said, we have facilities rolling off, we need to have facilities rolling on, and how, what is his thoughts or his eyesight in terms of attracting the appropriate tenants?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much, ma'am.
All right. Ms. Miller, and a follow-up with that. Do you think you could have that prepared for us for the next board meeting or the board meeting, the first board meeting in November?
I can have Mr. Lane ready, whichever meeting you would like for him to be.
Okay.
The first in November?
First of November is fine. If we could just make note of that?
Yes.
That we will put it down as an agenda item, so we will have that as a report.
Yes, ma'am.
And any information that you can give us ahead of time, because that's a lot, that's section sixteen is a lot. If we could get a snapshot of where we are and where in each lease, so we'll know how much future revenues we should be anticipating and where we are and where we are with the leases rolling off, you know, when they will be up for renewals.
I'll update that report.
Yeah.
Yes.
That would be good. So we'll have that for the first meeting in November.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much, okay? Any other questions? All right, now we're ready for the vote. We've already had a motion. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, a unanimous vote. Thank you so much. All right, now we're down to consent agenda items general, and we have, we have a number of these. To be honest with you, I think we need to hear from most of these. Is there anybody that wants to have any of them pulled?
For further discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, A and B.
A and B?
Yeah.
Okay, any others?
Uh, D.
D. With that said, then we can vote on C and E. Can I get a motion on that before we go into discussion?
Sommum.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Johnson and second by Mr. Oppenheim, okay? All in favor of A, I'm sorry, C and E?
Just a quick question about item E.
Item E?
And I see it's from Ms. Shepherd. I saw in kind of the response to my question on that, that they're essentially notified by MDE about the housing loan assistance. I remember asking this question last time this came out, how could we be more deliberate about putting that as like part of our, I don't know, our HR website or whatnot, because I think that's an important, we can't call it an incentive, but that's a really important thing to promote and say, I think we just gotta be deliberate.
I think Ms. Miller is going to answer that question.
It is absolutely part of our recruiting tool and our recruiting effort. So we are going aggressively at that process.
Because, and I can imagine the city could help out with that too, if we get really strategic with them.
And we did have a really good working relationship, you know, we just need to start reconnecting with the new administration at the city, just to kind of get them acclimated to where we are on that process. But yes, sir, that is absolutely where we need to go.
Well, they're talking about housing support for educators, so we need to be, we need to be elbowing our way into those kinds of sessions.
Yes, sir, we're absolutely getting in those meetings.
I'd be happy to elbow my way in, but I think, I think taking your lead on that since that's your bailiwick.
Also, Ms. Miller, if, I don't know if we can send something out to the board of realtors, you know, you may have realtors that are, you know, looking at sites in Jackson from across the United States on Zillow or whatever websites that people are looking at. If we could put that out and if it wouldn't go across a policy, if we could just put it out there.
Absolutely.
People that are just looking for economical places to work and live, live, work and play.
Absolutely.
J, Jackson Public Schools, Jackson, Mississippi.
And I can assist you with that.
Thank you.
One question. I noticed in the past that, you know, teachers or educators or employers of JPS have inquired about this program, but it seemed like there was a little hiccup, a little breakdown with Mississippi Home Corp. Has, has the transition gotten, gotten a little bit smoother for, for those applicants who apply or what?
I'm not familiar with that, Mr. Jones, but I can certainly look into it, just if you would, just give me a little background on it and I'll make sure that I look into it. I'm not familiar with the disconnect.
Okay, all right, we'll talk offline. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, all right. With that said, we're ready to vote on item C and E. All in, all in favor? Okay, we have a unanimous, thank you. All right, now for, up for discussion would be item A. Mrs. Faulkner, is she here? And she's not rolling, she's walking, come along.
Good evening, Miss S. Board Members. Dr. Murray, I present for your approval tonight the Second Amendment to the Strategic Alliance Agreement, Teen Trend Setters Reading Mentoring Program between the Barbara Bush Foundation and the Jackson Public School District.
All right, colleagues, you have any questions? Mr. Oppenheim?
I just wanted the data to see, and I had asked for it before the meeting in terms of what the, you know, outcomes for the students who were participating last school year. I think that'd be really helpful, you know, as we're moving forward on this. I think it's a great program, but sometimes great programs don't lead to great outcomes. And so I think it'd be really important to get some of that data, you know, as soon as possible.
I'm gonna shoot it to you.
Oh, you're gonna shoot it to me right now?
So, Ms. Oppenheim, what was done is, at the beginning of the school year in August, the STAR reading data was reported for all of the students, which included roughly a hundred and sixty-eight elementary school students. That data was also reported in the May STAR reading assessment, and consistently there was improvement with each of the scholars. I will add that the Barbara Bush Foundation really does not have a measuring tool in place to gauge the impact on the high school students. So I have been in conversations with our contact person, who is Tracy Gallagher, with Barbara Bush, to see if we can come up with something. We have anecdotal data of how it has made the students more attentive, more attuned to how they present themselves. They realize that people are watching, they're in that mentor role, and it has helped with their attitude towards school. But specific data for the high school, for the mentors, there isn't anything, but for the mentors, the data is clear that all of the students have grown in comparing the STAR data.
And thank you for that, and also especially for bringing up the high school students, because I imagine we could probably look at their academic data too, because sometimes if you're more engaged in one place, you're gonna be more engaged in that other academic incentive to be able to be involved elsewhere.
Correct. Nationwide, it has shown that participating as a mentor has increased their likelihood of attending college, but the real focus on the data is on the mentees, the elementary school students.
And then the last question, have we already started for this school year doing the program?
We're waiting for approval and then we'll start. We have a training that all of the program advisors go through, then we work with transportation to get the mentors to the schools and they'll be ready to go.
Thank you.
When is your projected, projected start date?
We actually have the training scheduled for Tuesday. Once it's approved, we'll notify the program advisors to start identifying mentors, and the mentees are selected if they're at least six months behind in their reading scores. So as soon as this is approved, we communicate. The program advisors have already been selected by their principals, we'll let them know that it's been approved and they can start the work of identifying participants.
Great, great, great. Okay, Ms. Johnson?
You mentioned transportation. Do you know the transportation costs for the program?
I don't, it's, this is a hundred thousand dollar program, and our in-kind donation is, is being a partner with this is to provide the transportation. So I don't have a dollar amount, I can't get that, but it has been an in-kind donation that the district has put forth to have the program in place in the district.
And are the hours that the high school students spend, are they eligible for community service hours?
They absolutely can be. At the end of the year, Ms. Johnson, we ask that each program advisor nominate an outstanding mentor, and they have been recognized at our school board meetings. And again, that's anecdotal data that we've had, that it's, they've just had a tremendous impact in their lives, participate, participating as mentors.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, any other questions? If not, can I get a motion?
Sommum, second.
All right, Mr. Oppenheim moved, Mr. Jones, second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, unanimous. All right, now we're ready to move to item B.
All right, the administration recommends approval of a service agreement with curriculum advantage to provide intervention services to students in Jackson Public Schools.
Any questions?
Yeah, this, oh, sorry about that. Thanks, Dr. Merritt, and this was a data question too. Response to my question was that they've moved six districts from F to C in a two-year period. What are those districts? Are they in Mississippi? Can you tell us a little bit more about their makeup and the intention here as compared to?
They were similarly situated districts in term of demographics. What I do want to say, it is a product that they have in which they will approximately be serving, promising, what we refer to as our promising twenty-five percent of our students, which is approximately twenty-five percent of our students in the district. As you are aware, in an accountability model, specifically on the elementary and middle school level, growth counts for, these students account for probably three hundred points on that model of seven hundred points. And so it's a great approach to have this product in our district. What it actually does is it has learning progressions in that those students who are being served in the bottom twenty-five, it scaffolds their learning, it individualizes their instruction. Another good thing that this program does is it integrates with our Renaissance program in that, and Renaissance is what we, the program that we use to administer our universal screener. And so as such, in talking or integrating with that system, it will individualize the instruction or the learning progression that the students need in order to grow so that we can see positive outcomes from them in the data.
Thank you, and thank you for that. Do you know which districts they were in?
Sure. Ms. Latner is here and you want to come speak to the representative from curriculum advantage?
Oh, yeah, great, thanks.
I'll let her come and speak to it.
Thanks for that, Dr. Merritt.
Mr. Jones, you have a question or?
Yeah, my question more so direct toward you, definitely hear your comments first.
The six SIG districts that Mr. Merritt was referring to, Dr. Merritt, were Indianola, Hollendale, LaFlore County, Claiborne County, Humphreys, Clarkstown, and we're in other, many other districts in the state of Mississippi and many large districts in other states as well.
And can you also talk a little bit about your process? I like what Dr. Merritt explained, but how do you work with districts in general, especially the ones in Mississippi, since I think most of those have all gone through a state takeover at some point?
Right, and we do work with, with some of those and many others. The way that ClassWorks works is it is a software program, and what it does is it puts data to work. So it takes your data from the student's test score, from when they take the STAR test, and it imports that data into ClassWorks, and from there, the instruction is produced. So there's a tight alignment, and from there, wherever that score puts the child on that scale score, then the instruction is matched to it. The student gets on for forty-five minutes per week in reading, forty-five minutes per week in math, and from there, the growth will be seen. So you have plenty of assessments, and we're the instruction part to that, and Renaissance is one of our partners.
You're the instruction, as in you bring in support to instruct the students once they?
Right, we are the actual instruction on the computer for the student. So when the student takes the assessment, that score is imported into ClassWorks, and then from there, that particular student is given a set of lessons based off of the skill gaps that they have. Our program fills skill gaps. So wherever an assessment says that there's a skill gap, then our program assigns a lesson, it assigns a mini lesson, and then for that mini lesson, there are activities. The student must pass at seventy percent before they can move to the next skill to show that that skill gap has been filled. If they do not master it seventy percent, it then will give them more lessons. So it's an individualized situation for each student that is on the program.
So then, two, just two follow-ups on that. So there's a teacher present helping them guide through that?
The teachers do have a role. This program can be administered through labs or through one-to-one devices. It can be used anywhere the student can access the internet. So it can be given at home as well. We produce very detailed reports that we, that you would be using for your teacher support team process, your multi-tiered system of support system, and so it will show whether the students are making the growth necessary.
And then just one, one last question, and it might be more for Dr. Murray or Dr. Merritt. Is this, with the standard twenty instructional management plan that we have to do, is this gonna be able to integrate with what we have to do related to that?
Yes, sir. So what this does, and a lot of times when it comes to our interventionists who are working with our promising twenty-five students, a lot of times they're doing the best they can in trying to identify the resources to address instructional deficiencies. So what this program comes in and do, it provides the resource, because they can also print out the material in order for the student to work on. And so it's not so much a guessing game, but it's very much aligned to that student's individual needs. And so it's almost like a, for example, a doctor providing a prescription for an element, it's that prescriptive in its approach. So it does fit in with standard twenty, and it gives us a more laser-like focus on focusing in on instructions.
And if I could add, our challenge has been growth. You know, growth for us has been a challenge. You know, you'll see the data consistently proficiency, we're moving in the right direction. With growth, it's fluctuating from year to year, and that's because, again, as Dr. Merritt said, we have to have a way of assessing whether we are moving our students in the learning paths that are created, the lessons that are associated with individual students doesn't, you know, there's no guesswork, there's not having to pool resources and that information is there. And the program is proven, we've been looking at this for about four years, and the data is clear that it helps with the growth piece, which is where our gaps are in growth.
Thanks.
Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Thank you. I noticed that there has been a lot of movements around this curriculum, and the question that just came up from the presentation, I didn't get her name, but the question I have is, how are you building capacity with your interventionists, with your, with your teachers in that program? Because you mentioned about that information that is gathered through assessment is then in turn generated by a program. And my question is, how are the, how are you growing capacity with your, with your teachers and how does this new program fit into that, into that piece? Because it seemed like to me, you mentioned there's a problem with growth, and as we began to get into this instruction management plan, it seems again, it goes back to curriculum. And I, so help me out, the first question, first two questions.
Yes, sir, and I'm gonna try my best to approach this. So when you talk about the work of the interventionists, for example, the classroom teacher teaches the standards, but it's the work of the interventionists to do skill-based instructions, which is, which are derived from the standards. And so this kind of focuses them on the skill a little bit more in terms of providing the instruction necessary for the student. However, what this program does, and I want to key in on this, it individualizes the instruction for each child, which is something that can be quite challenging for interventionists on average in our district that may serve from a hundred and fifty to two hundred kids in their building at the tier-two and tier-three level or at the tier-three level. So it does provide the individualized approach and skill-based instruction, and hopefully throughout their time with, working with them over a period of time, it will develop their capacity and how to address the deficits that the children have or the scholars have with particular skills.
Okay, I'm glad you went there. Thank you so much. Now, the next piece of this is what individualized review or evaluation of this curriculum as well as of this breakdown in identifying the skills that are needed for our students based on the data that we get and how we go in and have used this summer to, to train and... this summer to train, to know how to interpret data, to in turn work with our students to build them up. So how does that departmentalize, grow the process that we have to as the board review?
Yes, sir. So we should be looking at several things. One, we have our screening data. We have formative assessments, and then we'll have this additional data point. So as practitioners, we should triangulate the data, look at all these multiple data sources and see where the deficits are. And that should carve our path to what we need to do, not only in that tier-three instruction, but when we are looking at tier-one instruction, how to make it more robust. And as indicated in the audit, maybe it's some differentiation that we could do in the classroom to alleviate some students and remove them from the tier-three or tier-two and put it in, really emphasize our tier-one instruction. So when we look at all of those multiple data sources, we can carve a clear path in what we need to do in order to improve instruction on all levels, honestly.
Okay. How, what information did you pull together to gather that we need to go out and get a program to do this when, I say we as a district, not me as a clinician, I ain't in that world. But for me to understand how these dollars are going to improve the student outcome when we're having issues now with one-to-one devices. We're having issues now with systems to be used to employ this. And it still, it seems to me that there is some areas in the standard 20 that we just heard about that needs to be showed up. And I just want to ensure that this is not a duplication of services that we can provide in our own in-house. And how we're growing those capacities that have been pointed out to us since I've been on the board three years. We've been in this conversation about interpreting the information, about providing the necessary guidance to our students that we need to provide with growing our teacher capacity in terms of organically within that process. And to me, I'm just trying to understand how a program is going to come in and do a quick fix.
Can I address, Mr. Jones, we're required to provide supports for our students that are tier-three by the state. That's a requirement. We've used in the past, you all probably remember Accelerated Reader, I mean, I'm sorry, Academy of Reading, Academy of Math. So those were similar programs that we use to support those students. For us, to this point, the data, you know, is not where it needs to be. So we've researched different programs that have been, that have been positive, that have got positive gains in other districts. Again, we've looked at this along with other programs. And again, we have to provide support for our tier-three students through, whether it's individuals, and Dr. Merritt spoke to that. In schools, we may have upwards of 200 students that need interventions and one person. So physically, you know, it's impossible to provide that resource. So we have to employ programs to help us with that. This program, what is different about this program, what was appealing is it provides the individualized support for the students. And again, it's teacher-friendly. It prints out, it's married basically to Renaissance. It provides those learning paths. The teacher can print that out, and it's not very cumbersome for them to try to pull things together. So this is what we have identified as the leadership to be the most appropriate program to help us in the space that we're in now. And again, our data clearly will show that there are some issues with growth. And we think that this will help us close those gaps with growth. Also, we have gaps with teachers that are, you know, limited service substitute. That's a reality. And so this provides support for them as well through this program.
Okay. Where is the data that y'all keep referencing that, so we can take a look at this and I can have a clear picture of what you're speaking to? Because as lame, I'm hearing what you're saying, but I'm not seeing it on paper so I can kind of, you know, see the correlations and draw back and forth. So when will we get this?
Yeah, we'll provide that information to you.
But for me, making a decision tonight, that puts me in a precarious situation because I don't have all the detailed information in front of me to make a well-informed decision.
Okay. As relates to what it does?
As relates to bringing a program to assist the children, students, excuse me, with moving to the next level and also addressing the growth piece that you all keep referencing.
And let me say this, another component that this will address is our dropout prevention plan as well, which will be coming to you at the next board meeting. Because we talk about how we are going to prevent dropout prevention, and it's a K-12 continuum. And this is just an added resource that we must serve and as we're required by statute to provide services to those bottom 25 children, those children who are in that level. This is a systematic approach to address that.
Okay. Well, maybe we need to perhaps have a work session where we all can understand what the game plan is. Because again, perhaps, again, the information that's needed is not in front of us, and we have not reviewed that. And so, again, for me, as one person looking at this information, also looking at the schools that were mentioned, that, you know, that she mentioned, they find themselves in situations that, you know, that need some additional conversation. And so I just needed that.
Dr. Murray, I have a quick question. Are we still using Academy for math and Academy for reading?
It's an option for schools. We no longer contract with them. We own the product, so it's available for us. But we found that that program did not meet the needs. There are some other, through using it for several years, the data has not, for us, trended in the right direction. And so, again, we've looked at multiple programs over the last, and I agree, you know, it's not about program. It's about building capacity for tier-one instruction. But we're in a place now where we have to support those students that are tier-two and tier-three. And for us, at this point in time, this is what we feel is the best program for us or the best option for us at this point.
So my children use Academy math and reading at Davis. And what they would do is each morning when they got off the bus, if they had additional time, they would go into the computer lab, spend 15, 20 minutes, and that would be if they missed any skill. So before they fell behind, they were able to access this program, and I thought it was very beneficial. My question now is, so in other schools, is there access like that?
Well, different schools have different models due to personnel, due to, you know, access to computers. So there are different models. I'm sure some schools have the same model that Davis has, but there are others that have students scheduled to labs. There are other opportunities for students to access the Academy of Reading and Academy of Math. But again, we had that program for several years, and the data is not, did not trend in the direction that we felt it should be. And so at this point, we've made a decision with a lot of research, a lot of conversation, looking at a lot of programs because we know programs are not the answer. But for us, we felt like with the relationship that we already have with Renaissance, which is, you know, the state, of course, uses as well, this directly aligns with that. So we want to be smart about what we do purchase. And so this, we felt was a good, was a good fit for us. And the data supports it across the state and the country, supports that it helps with growth. And so, again, that's one of the target areas that we have is growth. We want to grow our students, and we feel like this will help us. And so that's the recommendation of the administration, that we approve this.
And so is that growth also tied to access? So will there be consistent access in schools with this program?
Yes. Again, the bottom 25, as Dr. Merritt mentioned, the target will be those bottom 25 students. We do have access. We've come a long way as it relates to access with laptops and computer labs and things like that. And we're moving forward to make sure that we provide the kind of access that's needed. But in every school, the students that are in that bottom 25 will have access. They'll have the 45 minutes that's required in each area each week.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any more questions for Dr. Merritt or the other lovely lady? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Sims. For your question on Mr. Jones about other school districts, when you asked me the question about school districts where we had moved school districts from being an F to a higher level, those were the school districts. However, I will tell you that we're in many other school districts that are not rated F, D, or C. We're currently in Tupelo District-wide, Bay St. Louis. We've been in Pass Christian, Senatobia, Clarkstown, Hattiesburg. I was the superintendent in the past eight years in Bay St. Louis. I served on the first RTI model for the state of Mississippi for the multi-tiered systems of support. What ClassWorks does when you ask for data, ClassWorks is the supplemental program. It's not the core curriculum. It's not meant to be. And the data is going to come from when the student's skills deficits are identified, and then they work on them. Then you're going to see growth because they're going to be progress monitored. And so those reports will automatically be generated for you to be able to see that growth. But I could give you certainly, you know, there's many, many school districts. We work from the coast all the way up. I am the account representative. I would be your account representative. I live here in Jackson. I have an extensive background in education and in the multi-tiered systems of support. I also have a very, very, very strong record with increasing the rate of growth in school districts. And the population that you're looking at, working at, your 25% is critical. Because not only do you have to fill the skill gaps, but on the new accountability model, which I had, was selected to serve on that as well at the state level for the creation of it, your lowest bottom 25, they're going to hit you in reading, they're going to hit you in math. They're also going to hit you on the growth factor. So they're actually, they have the possibility of affecting your model in six different data points. So when you ask for data, we have plenty of research on our website. Literally, if you click on research, there are so many studies. I know we did provide to the district when they issued the RFP, the data on, the research on the three-tiered model. There's plenty of research on the effects of ClassWorks, on its effectiveness. We have to have that research to back us up. We have to be evidence-based, which means we have to show that our product produced that result, and ClassWorks has done that. We are in some very large districts. We're in Atlanta, Gwinnett County. We are in Umbel, Texas. We're all over the southeast. But I hope that I've addressed your question with data and certainly didn't want to mislead you when you asked me about the current districts that were using the program.
Okay. Yep. And thank you so much. And you're exactly right about the accountability and the growth model. That's my mindset as I'm looking at the information. The concern I have is, is that I have not seen that information from our district put in front of me to align with your question, you know, what the information that you're providing. I understand the excellent model for middle schools at Pass Christian. I understand the process and the growth up at Tupelo. And we definitely understand Bay St. Louis in that area down there as well, particularly Biloxi. And so as we look at those schools, there are some demographics that do mirror here. However, there's still some questions about what are the percentages that we have at minimum? What are the percentage we have at basic? And also in that average space to address the bottom 25 that's been pointed out, of which I do not have that information in front of me to look at. And so with that, and because we're in the space that we're in, it's very critical that we have that information to make a well-informed decision. Because, again, this conversation has been going on for a long time.
Yes, sir.
And I'm very, very dialed into this curriculum. And we want to make sure, ensure that those spaces are added because every being walking in a building in an accountability model is being touched. Everybody has to show growth. Everybody has to show some movement. And so we understand that. And I definitely appreciate your comments.
And that is why we designed it to reach the 6,100 students because we took the 25% of your enrollment. The state actually sets that number for you on that model. And so that was the, that's where that number comes from for each district. But certainly, the sooner that a program can get started, the more growth you can have would be one of the concerns. But thank you for allowing me to address the board.
Thank you. Thank you. I do have one more question, Dr. Merritt. And?
Dr. Latner?
Dr. Latner. I just want, the question is, since you have the model working in other school districts, are you using it primarily as a teaching resource in the classroom before classes and so forth? Are you sending anything home with the child? The schools that are getting that double level improvement, are you using this as a secondary tool to go home to increase those worksheets and so forth? The schools that have been able to achieve greater, are they doing some additional worksheet at home, basically? Do you know?
I'll start off by saying this. It is supplemental in nature.
Okay.
So it's a level of support that they receive above the classroom. Now, how it's going in other districts, I'll let Dr. Latner address that.
The implementation plan, of course, is decided by your district team. But the research says behind ClassWorks that a student must do 45 minutes a week in reading and 45 minutes a week on math on the computer program. Now, that is, Ms. Sims, done during the school day. Some schools, and like Dr. Murray referred to, if a student is in tier-two, they require more time on the program as per state guidelines. And so when they're audited, you're going to have to be able to show that the student was on that program or on a program a certain length of time, and the report shows that time. Now, on tier-three, they have to be on there even more time. So, but as far as the research, and that's a very good question, it does require 45 and 45. Can you assign it for homework? Absolutely, because it can be checked. And you can tell the students, you need to do 15 minutes per night. It can even be done in the summertime. So it's just, but primarily, what we, the way that, you know, anything that we expect, we want to inspect. So we want to be able to do it during the school day. How it looks during the school day? We actually would come in once it's approved, and we would work with you on how does that look? It might look different in one school in Jackson Public than it does in another school. But we would make sure that they got the 45 and the 45 on each subject on the computer. But certainly supplemental is being used. But in the schools that are getting the results and the research behind ClassWorks, it does say in order to show growth, you need the 45 and the 45 minutes. And typically, that is during the school day. But the more, the better.
Yeah.
If I could add one thing, you know, and again, it is, we always want to make sure that we inform the board and keep them, give them all the information they need. But it is, the transferable gains also requires a certain amount of time, and it's October. And so it's extremely important that we provide, you know, the support for our tier-two and tier-three students as required by the state and that we have something in place to do that that is research-based. And so this is our recommendation to the board.
All right. Last question.
Oh, thanks. I have no problem voting on this tonight. I think we're in kind of a precarious situation, and so sometimes that leads to, you know, yes, we need more information, we need more data, but I don't see that as necessarily tied to whether we vote on this right now. Because I, too, would like to see the bottom 25 and some of the data on that. But I do wonder, source of funding, IDEA, why is it coming from IDEA? Because I know tier-two, tier-three does not necessarily imply that students have IEPs.
So it's coming out of that? There's an amount allocated out of IDEA, CEIS, coordinating early and intervening services that fund CEIS that can be used for this group of students that are considered at risk.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
All right. Can I get a motion for the floor, please?
So move.
Second.
All right. All in favor, please raise your hand. Oh, not in favor, raise your hand.
I'm gonna stay.
Okay, we got one absent. We got one abstaining from Mr. Jones.
The only other thing I would say, and I think I say this pretty ad nauseam, is that, you know, I'm very reactionary against computer programs to move children forward. You know, unless there's very specific data evidence, whatnot, because I think it's always going to be better to have a teacher educator in front of that child. And, you know, I think as we've kind of transitioned into being really focused on 21st century learning, there's still a place for adults to be teachers. So, I make this point a lot.
One other thing, really to, I think where Mr. Jones is going from, Dr. Murray, we've just completed the first nine weeks. So, we as a board, we need to see how our students have done, what your star ratings are. We need to see where we are this year versus last year. We don't want to end up in saying, well, we didn't know. We want to know where we are. Those reports that show the greens, the reds, the yellows, we need to see that so we can evaluate where we are, the trends and where we're going.
And we will provide that data. We've just completed star testing. And so, as we've done in the past, we'll provide you an update for the initial screener when we test again in January and of course, at the end of the year. As you all know, we moved to formative assessments, seven mini-assessments. So, we're not doing the benchmark testing per se like we've done in the past. And so, when we capture that data, we'll provide that for you as well. We will have a benchmark assessment to this year, which are comprehensive and we'll be able to provide that information to you once those assessments are done as well.
Okay. So, where, what, I think we're, we don't want to just get wrapped up in just giving reports, but what we do want to know is where we're starting, what our start baseline is. So, even if we come from last year's spring assessment, we need to know where we are and where we're moving so we can detect our trends, if we're trending up or at baseline, we need to know it. And I think that's what Mr. Jones is really referring to. We get these proposals, board meeting to board meeting, but we are trying to get a overall picture so we know this is going to attack this particular area to strengthen it. Okay?
And if I may, and this is no reflection on Ms. Dr. Lattner, because I'm very familiar with her work and as well as her family. So, but however, as you've already stated so eloquently, this is about where we're starting and so we can put, you know, information together. And thank you so much.
We're moving and we just need to know how fast we're moving and what areas. Okay. Now, we have done that particular one. We're down to, let's see, we have D?
D.
Okay. Item D. Any question, Ms. Bingham is already here?
Yes.
Any questions for Ms. Bingham?
Yes, I do. The question I have relates to, I see where this rehabilitation will be via transitional service, you know, to students with disabilities, to my understanding, from reading.
Actually, it's a collaboration-
Collaboration, okay.
-between the school district or the exceptional education department and the folk rehab services.
Okay.
They already are assigned counselors to each high school to help with the children with disabilities. So, we're adding another layer to help with the local school district participating as well, getting our students to transition to meaningful employment.
Okay. All right. The question I have is, how are we using the other, excuse me, other students in the general and especially in that area to transition them to a more workforce-ready path as well? What measures have you put in place for students who doesn't, for instance, for me with Adam McBride over there? But how are we working with other students in that same space?
Now, this program, it won't take the place of the transition that's already in place for Gen X students or children that don't meet this criteria. This is focused more for that need the intensive transition support. So, as far as the transitioning that's coming into, like for the Gen X students, I would have to refer back. I do believe they do have transition coaches in the high school that help with the general education population.
Well, not so much generally, I'm talking about specialized. Those students who are not have a severe case here of disability.
Now, what we do do is we have transition plans in their individual education program. We set up transition plans with linkage. So, we do, like say they're not as severe and they might need to explore college options. We will set up visits that they can go to Heinz Community College or we'll set up those college visits with their parents to get them exposed to those college situations.
Sure. Okay. Let me get a more specific. How are we working with those students who are already in special ed that has a education plan, as you mentioned? How are we working with, through whatever pathways that, for instance, they may not be going to college, but they are positioned for a career?
Right.
So, how are we transitioning those students through some workforce readiness pathway?
And those students will go to our Career Development Center.
Okay.
They can attend, like their vocational trades, they will take that up at the Career Development Center.
Okay. How has that been? What has been our, what has been the number of students that have been able to be placed after going through that process?
As far as the employment?
Yes.
I would have to check. That's an indicator. So, I would, I'd have to follow up with you to give you the exact data of, because we have to report back on students a year after they graduate, so I can give you that data.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Sims.
All right. Can I get a motion for the floor, please?
So, move. Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Oppenheimer. We're ready to vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. Unanimous vote. Thank you, Ms. Bingham. All right. We've covered everything here. Now, we're ready to move on to consent agenda item personnel.
To Dr. Murray and Ms. Sims.
One sec.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Jones. We're going to pull, um, section N will be pulled.
Okay.
Okay.
So, the administration is asking for, well, to Dr. Murray, Ms. Sims, board members, the administration is asking for approval of staff personnel matters with correction to D-16. The effective date should be August 4th of 2017 and the pulling of item 10 to be considered in executive session.
Item 10.
Excuse me, item, item N, I'm sorry. Item N to be considered in executive session.
Okay. All right. Does that, can I get a motion for the floor, please?
So, move. Second.
Okay. Do we need to pull any other items? All right. With that said, we're going to move on to a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, we have unanimous vote. All right. Now, we're down to other business.
Make an announcement about this real quick.
Go ahead, Ms. Oppenheimer.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, yeah, you know, I'm not going to throw out any sudden policy movements. I'll save that for maybe next time. But the, every year, as some of you all know, we do an annual art and poetry slam for high school and college age students. This year, it'll be at Offbeat on October 14th. There's some of these flyers by the front door, educators, you know, also make sure to send it to Dr. Murray to maybe send out to folks. But it's free to participate, it's free to come, there's cash prizes for the winners in both art and poetry sections, I guess you would call it. And we're encouraging students to register and there's a little registration thing on there. But yeah, it's always a great event. It's to celebrate and discuss, you know, issues that our young people are facing in the community right now. October is also Youth Justice Awareness Month, so that's why we do it every October. So.
Okay. Thank you. Any other business? Okay. Now, we need to go into consideration-
Close the meeting to consider going into executive session.
For executive session.
So, move.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and second to go into executive session for the, Mr. Jones moved, Ms. Johnson second, for personnel matters. All right. Well, thank you, staff.
You don't have to state why at this point.
Okay. Okay. So, at this point, we are going to-
Closing the meeting to consider going into executive session.
So, move.
So, move. Second by Ms. Johnson.
Yeah.
To adjourn the meeting.
That's it.
Consider. All in favor?
All right.
Okay. Then they clear the room. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.